Can you hear me in the room?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It says I was signed in as a member of the public, not as a member of council. Is that okay?
Oh, but we heard you before too, Brian. We can hear you. Our mics are just off.
Okay, thank you. I have no audio. I can't hear anything.
Our mics are on. Can you hear us now? Turn your mics on, guys.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Can you hear us now?
I could not, thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, we just have them off. All right, it is 6:01. We will call the meeting to order. Everybody could please stand for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Present.
Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Any deletions?
I'd like to make a motion and take one and two off the agenda. There are two ordinances, one is closing the restrictions and then the handover council board.
Mr. Mike on.
Only because there's mistakes in it. I think they need to be better cleaned up before they can do this. The mics are up.
Okay, there's a motion to remove one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on removing one and two.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Rado?
No. Okay, items one and two are removed, so then we'll change the numbering accordingly. Any other deletions?
Oh, should have adopted agenda second.
Call favor?
Aye.
Absentions opposed, agenda adopted. Now public comment on voting session agenda items only. Let's see, the first one I have is Richard Miller. Your municipality isn't on here, so please just state where you reside.
Hi, my name is Richard Miller. I'm from the Luzerne County Library System, and I reside in Salem Township. So I'm here tonight to, first of all, thank you for supporting the Luzerne County Library System. We often share with you our statistics, our usage, people that come to the library, we count the programs, the activities of our library, and we share that with you, not just to show you that we are putting your funds to good use, but it's also a requirement of the state to accept state aid that we should report to our municipal funders. This year, we did something a little different. The numbers are important. I'm a numbers guy myself. However, we also like to share stories at the library. And this year, we printed out a few dozen postcards and asked people that came to our programs, people that use our library, to fill them out and tell you what they do at our library. It won't take very long. We received more than I thought we would, but just for example.
It's, he has an ARP application and we're voting on it, so I think, is it related to that?
It is, it is not related to that.
Okay, then I'm sorry. We can speak during.
That's okay.
Yep.
I thought I put it on agenda.
Sure, when I heard the library system, I thought it was on your application. John Soski? And then also, please just state your municipality.
John Soski will speak. So ARP money, that's fine, right?
Yep.
That's an agenda item?
Yes.
Um, I'm here to talk about the ARP money for the, the project for the, on the former Sterling lot. The group that, who wants to build there, just from, I go to Wilkes-Barre City Council meetings, and from what I've seen from them, they're not the most trustworthy group, and they're not, they're not really getting anything done down there. When they bought that, when they applied or went in front of city council to buy that property, they made it seem like they had investors. And I'm going to give you the date and everything on this, so you can just check the council meeting that's on YouTube. The council meeting from 3:22:18. Steve Baruch said around 58 minutes and 50 seconds that this will be privately funded. Now, this is not the first time that they're looking for public funds for this project. You know, like, he lied to the city to make sure that they could get that project, and like I said, you could, you could look it up yourself and see it on YouTube. I just don't think that if you give them this money to do this project, I don't know if they'll ever get it done. Like, we've been waiting for years. They've seemed like, they made it seem like that project was going to be done in two, three years, and we're on like, past five years, and we have nothing but a dirt lot there, so, you know, vote at your own risk. But, you know, you might get nothing for it. City of Wilkes-Barre, we haven't gotten anything built there, and they, they made it seem like they had investors and things were going to happen, and nothing's ever happened to that property. And it's all could just take a look down the street, and you could see it's just a big dirt hole, so vote at your own risk.
Thank you. Elizabeth Hartman?
Hi, Elizabeth Hartman, Handover Township. On what was five, which is now three, because we changed our numbers, right? Which is the motion to adopt resolution pending litigation matter between Sarah, can't pronounce it. So basically, it's someone that committed suicide over at the jail. There's a settlement. My understanding that it's about $790,000 using WellPath. They've been in place for four years over at the jail. How long are we going to keep them in control of the jail and the nursing staff? How many lawsuits are we going to pay out to families that have died over in that jail with WellPath contracts still in place? That's a question for county council. And then I also want to talk about ARP funds. I think what you did last week, the way you voted, is going to hurt us with booth management. The booth tried to speak on the speaker. They were muted at one point. She couldn't speak. She did try to speak out during our meeting, so I have a concern on that. And then number three is, I was picketing this week. Maybe some of you heard me outside picketing. I'd like to know where smoking areas are on all county-owned buildings, so courthouse, Penn Place, Raminsky Building, and the jail. Where does staff need to go to smoke? I picked up garbage behind the building. I picked up multiple sheriff gloves.
Miss Hartman, that, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll talk later.
Okay. I have another slip. Dale. Dale Frederick, is it non-agenda? Is it non-agenda or agenda?
Non-agenda.
Okay, we'll wait till the end. Controller Griffith?
I had commented on number one, but it's off the agenda.
Okay. Any other members of the public? I don't see anybody online with their hand up. Anybody online that wishes to speak?
Madam Chair, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. About the ARP money, I would just like to remind everyone on council that because of council's vote to adopt the Mitchell Plan, that subverted the original rules that you all agreed to when you started the process with booth management. So therefore, those applicants who were scored out, and then other applicants who weren't part of the process that applied, that were scored out, were brought back in, are now going to have the, you guys are voting on those applicants that were scored out, that are brought back in. And it's not, it doesn't escape other people in the public, including myself, that some of those individuals and businesses happen to be politically connected. So I would advise councils and strongly suggest that you guys go back to the original rules that you adopted, which was, one of them was one allocation per municipality, one allocation per business and organization. You have a municipality, City of Hazelton, that received $500,000 for their land bank, and now are going, you guys are going to vote to give them $995,000, which is another allocation of the ARPA funds, which you all agreed that there would only be one allocation per municipality. So therefore, I am asking all members of the public that were scored out to file a complaint with the U.S. Treasury Inspector General that every, anybody who felt that they were locked out of the process or were scored out and were denied, and other applicants were put back in, please file a complaint with the U.S. Treasury Inspector General. I'm sure he'd love to hear your side of the story. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay, I'm hearing none. Do we have a motion? Chipper for a minute? All in favor?
Aye.
Absentions opposed?
No.
What's our adopted? So the new number one, we're starting at number three. Motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Edwardsville Borough for the premises located at 59 Russell Street, Edwardsville.
Okay, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, motion to adopt resolution for NPC ballot printing and mailhouse services.
Motion.
Second.
On the question. The responsibility of Board of Elections is actually to choose the vendor, not county council. I won't be supporting this motion as it, as it's written, because I don't think it's in our wheelhouse. This kind of puts us in a precarious position, because it really makes us look like the Board of Elections, under Title 25, under one of their powers and duties, is to choose their, you know, vendors and to also buy all equipment supplies that are needed to conduct elections. You know, I've sent this out numerous times to county council. It's right in the law. I think, you know, if it didn't have NPC's name in there, I'd be okay with it, just allocating the money portion of it to, to give them the money to choose whoever they want to choose, but not to actually choose the vendor here at county council.
Please mute if you're on Zoom and not speaking. Thank you.
I mean, you know, we're just going to muddy the waters a little bit more by, by allowing us to sort of, you know, consummate this, this vendor along with the money. That's not our wheelhouse.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
No.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
My, yes, two of them.
Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Sarah Scovone and Michaela Merdick as administrators of the State of Haley Poviselle versus Luzerne County WellPath LLC, Correct Care Solutions LLC, and Melissa Yankovic.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
On the question. Just so everyone realizes, this is a settlement that has been proposed and promised to its direct administration. This money will be money that we have to pay out of the current budget. The recommendation would be that we look at the prison budget first, since it is expensive coming.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnley. All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have a roll call?
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes. Number four, motion to introduce ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget in order to deposit $109,601.98 into the reserve.
Motion Venus.
Second. That's fine.
Venus Lovett? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes. Number five, motions to amend the policies and procedures for the assessment and evaluation of ARPA fund distribution, cap scoring, multiple applications.
Motion.
We'll have to state the exact amendment, so around the scoring or where we want to start.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend taking out the scores and adding in the caps that Mr. Mitchell suggested.
Thank you.
Which is the $2,500,000, $200,000, right?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Mine, yes, two of them.
Okay, motion passes. Number six, motion to adopt resolution awarding American Rescue Plan Act grant money.
Is there any other changes to that?
Are there any other additions to that?
I stated.
Okay, so back to number six, motion to adopt resolution awarding American Rescue Plan Act grant monies.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution, R2023, on page 210 of the agenda. Exhibit A will be marked as the all projects list on page five of the revised handout.
Uncle with the handout.
Five for eight, I'm sorry.
Maybe it's five. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Two questions. For everybody aware, they even know where you would be. Voting on awards here, people who are getting awards have requirements. Part of the requirements is that you get completion of the work by the end of 2026. So, gentlemen, I spoke earlier, we're saying, council, there is requirement. If they cannot complete that, that money does not go. The other part is, they must sign off on all that stuff, so that it's in place. You may have to sign the contract. And money is very definitely, there's details involved here, that the money has to be spent in the right way, the right timelines, it's just not an open door kind of situation. And this booth has done a great job, I think, identifying the steps that are involved. Like I said, there will be a contract signed, but we'll include those steps, so everybody is fully aware of that. Just for important information, but I think that's important.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McGinnley. Mr. Soski?
Madam Chair.
It's for this list, the large list, the full, all, the list that says all projects.
Madam Chair.
It's in the handout, and I believe it's made five, all, kind of all projects. It's just a separate package. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was being heard. So my question is, Madam Chair, is the motion to adopt or award all projects collectively on that list?
Yes.
Okay, then on the question, I'd like to say I'm all for small businesses. I always have been, and, and I will say this. We plan on, or we did pass a motion last meeting to award $6 million to the local chambers of commerce in the county to be awarded to the small businesses. Six million's quite a sum of money. Also, small businesses collected from the federal government post COVID. They collected the PPP loan program, which eventually became a grant program. And they also collected on the awards, they were awarded grants on the CARES package. And now they're going to receive grants from the $6 million award we're giving to the chambers. And to award individually these businesses on this list, I think, is not responsible. And I would like to see a separate vote separately, just on the small businesses off this list. So I'd like to make an amendment at this time to amend the motion on the floor to exclude and set on the side for a separate motion, the following small businesses. And there are 14 of them. Coslet Dental Solutions, Dantone Vending, DMC Graphics, Dr. Joseph Costello, Lang Beverage Company, Michael Beloga Foot and Ankle Center, Patty Sports Bar and Restaurant, Reba's Auto Sales, Agar Southern Cuisine, The Lands at Hillside Farms, The Wandering Brew, and let's see, Valentine X Studios and Whiskers World, Inc. That's 13 entities, not 14. I'd like to amend the motion to exclude those at this time.
Okay, there's a motion to exclude those. Is there a second?
Mr. Raybo, one person. The Lands of Hillside Farms, that is a nonprofit, this correct, I think they qualify as a small business.
I know. Mr. Thornton, your motion included not just small businesses. Do you want to, do you want to clarify that it's just small businesses?
Yeah, if the Lands at Hillside Farms is not considered a business, small business, then I would exclude them. And then we would have 12 entities.
And you missed, you missed a few as well that are small businesses. So I don't know, maybe instead of stating them specifically, do you just want to make the motion? Once that.
Okay, I thought, yeah, I thought I reviewed the whole list, but I could be mistaken. So, yeah, I'll, I'll restate my motion to, the amended motion would be to eliminate from this general motion on the floor, all small businesses that appear on this list that we're voting on at this time.
Guys, there a second?
Second.
On the, on the motion, we had a similar resolution to this last year, where we attempted to give the chambers of commerce like $15 million or $30 million out of this money in order to do exactly what Mr. Thornton is saying to do now. And I, I supported that last time. It failed, so now we're at this step. I have no desire to support this motion. They've already been through enough, and we are giving, we are, we are giving $6 million to the chambers for businesses that either couldn't or didn't apply. So I, I don't want to put any of these businesses that applied through any, any more trouble than they have been through, so I'm not supporting them.
On the question.
Sure.
There's one here for Wyoming Valley Sanitarium, $2 million. We already gave them initially at the ARPA money, right at the beginning.
I believe there was, and maybe Attorney Skeen can jump in. I think ones for, one was for the sanitary authority, and one was for the stormwater division.
I believe the $2 million, which is the stormwater division, I mean, that was something that they were.
It says sanitary.
Yeah, I guess, I think they're two separate.
They were two different questions.
Yeah. I, I was told they were.
Or you had a contract.
I was told they were separate.
Doing with the stormwater fee. That's why that's the contract is done. So, yes, there's money involved, but it's for a different purpose, really, the stormwater fee. The county was responsible for this, it's a significant amount of money.
Did they wait in the services, in the senator's office? Didn't have to pay the JAS.
Sure.
One question too. I have a problem with some of my colleagues voting on some of these entities as well, because I think there's a conflict of interest, because some of you work for the agencies that are going to be receiving the money. So en masse, I mean, voting on them is, in essence, voting on giving your employer money. So I don't know how you can do it ethically speaking, from a state ethics act perspective as a public official. I think you need to pull some of these out, you know, if they're going to be receiving money, you should not be voting on those items. You can't just say, hey, I'm going to vote for it collectively, because by doing the affirmative, you're still voting for it. So it's, it's kind of an all or nothing deal. So you're going to vote yes or no on the whole entire package. And by voting yes on that entire package, you are putting yourself in jeopardy for an ethics act.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Read on, Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton, go ahead.
Yeah, these, these are all valid, pretty, you know, good points they're making. I, I would say, could we just vote on the amendment that I proposed with the small businesses alone? And then we could discuss another amendment if the body wishes to do so, to, you know, break out other amendments.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Thornton's amendment to the original motion, so that's removing small businesses. So, we'll do a roll call vote on whether or not you want to remove the small businesses. Yes, they get removed. No, they don't.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, I'm going to, before I vote, I just want to mention to the group, there's no harm in removing these entities on the side to vote separately tonight, but by leaving them in there, you force someone like me to vote no on the whole package. Now, eighty percent of these entities I support, and I want to vote yes on them. But if we leave the small businesses in there, I, I have to vote no on the whole package, and that, that's not truly representative of what my vote reflects. So, but having said that, I vote yes.
Mr. Urban?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Lovett?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Lasgavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Radel?
No.
Three yes, eight nos.
Okay, back to the original motion. We have a first and a second on the original motion.
On the question, just to, just to respond to what Mr. Urban said, I was under the impression that, you know, when we state our vote, either in the affirmative or negative, that all we would need to say essentially is, you know, I'm voting yes on all of these, with the exception of X organization, because I have a conflict of interest with that organization, I'll abstain from, from that particular one, which is how that's done in other situations.
Pass on that one fast.
It's one resolution, it's, it's one collective resolution. You can't put an asterisk next to, with the exception of, and that would be splitting your vote in the same actual resolution. You can't do that. It's either up or down.
This is a good point to bring up at the meeting, instead of on Friday, when the agenda comes out.
On the question, when we pass the budget, people have a stink certain sections of budget, vote on the whole budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Same difference. So, essentially, that would be what would happen today, if there is a pure seven vote, and somebody abstains. For one, then you still have six people who are best.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on this entire list. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Thornton?
I, I want to vote yes, but I have to vote no on the whole package, because the small businesses are included in it, so I vote no.
Mr. Urban?
I'm going to be voting no, because I think it's ethically wrong for some of my colleagues to vote on the package as a collective body. It's not the small businesses or anybody, but I don't think the procedure was solid correctly.
I'm voting yes. Some possible conflicts with King's College and the Iron Temple Restoration Project, because of interactions with members of the head staff. I'm voting yes.
Mr. Venus?
I'm voting yes, again, with the possible conflict of King's College, because I graduated King's.
Is, is Dan a alumni?
I wasn't sure, so I figured he was on the side of God.
So, Kings has two extensions. Go ahead, I'll keep track. You do your thing, I'll keep track. What was your Ira?
The Iron Temple.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I got it.
Mr. Lasgavage?
I vote no. Not out to hurt small business or any business, but there's some businesses that don't even follow. When I researched them, did all my work, there's some businesses that do not even follow Luzerne County. In addition to that, some of the numbers are even wrong on this list, so with that being said, my answer is no.
Mr. Lombardo?
I vote yes on everything except for the two conflicts that I've listed, with the Greater Preston Regional Ambulance and the Greater Preston Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
I vote yes, with the exception of junior achievement, due to the fact that my son is a member of that advisory board.
Mr. Mitchell?
I vote yes, except for two projects, which I've already disclosed to Booth Consulting as conflict of interest, which are Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority and Valley Crest Realty. So, what does this mean?
Please don't speak while we're voting.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Please don't speak while we're voting.
Mr. Radel?
Yes, with the extension of the conflicts that I gave to Booth, Greater Wyoming Valley Area YMCA, Maternal and Family Health Services, United Way of Wyoming Valley, Volunteers in Medicine, Volunteers of America, and the Wyoming Area Regional Police Department. So, the only, the, everything only had one extension, other than Kings, that had two. So, we're good. Okay, motion passes with the extensions. There's no project asked to be removed. I have a comment on non-agenda items. First, I have Mr. Griffith.
Under non-agenda items, Madam Chair, I have a comment about the use of paper ballots for the election on May sixteenth in the primary. This county spent an awful lot of money a couple of years ago to buy Dominion machines. I certainly understand the cost that's involved in programming Dominion machines and all the things that we have to deal with in voting. However, the taxpayers spent an awful lot of money for those machines, and I don't think it's fair for the county Bureau of Elections to make the arbitrary decision on their own to go with paper ballots without consulting with council, who approved the purchase of those machines. I, I, I don't know if it's within the purview of the council to restrict them from doing it, but I think respect to this body requires them to come to you and explain why they're going with paper ballots as opposed to machines. The county taxpayers spent about three million dollars on those machines, based on the state wanting us to have electronic voting devices and a, and a paper trail. There was a lot of deliberation done by council to decide which machines to buy, and now that's all been thrown away by the Bureau of Elections deciding in their own wisdom that we're going to do paper ballots on May sixteenth, because programming costs too much money. We knew that programming was going to cost money in the county when we bought the machines. Ms. Chris Bell used to do the programming and save us a lot of money. Why are we not doing that in the bureau? I think it's a bad mistake for this county to go with paper ballots, without at least explaining to the body that approved the purchase of those machines, the reason why we're doing it. I think it's a disservice to this council. I think it's a disservice to the people of this county. A question about Sherman Hills Apartments. There was a shooting recently over there this week. This council approved a, a purchase of that property by another entity that promised us that they were going to get a different owner over there and clean up that property. That was over three years ago, if I remember correctly, and we gave them tax forgiveness, the whole deal. So, they could purchase that property and fix it all up, and here we are, three years later, with the same problems. Could somebody from council please determine whether we need to continue with a tax-exempt status for that entity? They got that gift from the county, with the understanding that they were going to fix that property up for the safety of the people of Wilkes-Barre. I don't think it's fair to us to do that. We gave them the property to, to clean it up and give them tax forgiveness to do it. The last thing I have is, who's responsible for the settlement for their jail? When I was on council, we had a settlement for three million dollars for Mackey. Now, we have a settlement for three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the jail. Who's being held accountable for that? Anyone from the county at all? I know Well Path is involved. Are we taking steps to remove Well Path? Are we taking steps to find out who was responsible for the suicide and hold them accountable by employment or otherwise? We can't continually do the same things over and over and expect a different result. That's basically what we're getting with the jail. We always have settlements, we always pay out, and nobody's ever held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Dale Frederick?
Well, my name's Dale Frederick. I've been farming down the Kisselinn property of the dock for approximately half of it, all my life, really. Years ago, my father made some kind of deal with the county to clean up all the barns, because they were loaded with manure and hay, and they were being turned into classrooms and dining halls and whatnot, and we paid rent ever since then. Okay, so we spent a lot of money maintaining the property. Farming's like putting money in a bank. You put money in the soil, you get a crop out. If you take too much out, pretty soon your bank's going to be empty. So, I hate to see it turned over to a series of different farmers, and the soil depleted, the water control structures that we spent a lot of money out of our own pocket to maintain and build. My daughters here, would she have permission to hand out some handouts that shows some of the things we've done on it?
Sure, as long as Ms. Lawrence gets one, so she can post it online.
Okay. Over the years, I've, I've spoken to, like, David Padre, and he said, you know, continue to farm it and take care of it, and I had miss, I might not have the pronunciation right, Crocomo, Crocomo. I had her sign once, when every four or five years, a farm service agency, as you sign a form, they were actually operating the property, and she signed off on that. So, I would hope, if you could see fit, to maybe preserve that property in a farmland preservation, and then sell it if you want the money. Then everybody will be happy. The people in the towns and the residences all around there, you'll have mostly the money out of the property between what you sell it for, for farming uses, it'll be preserved, and everything should be good. We'd be interested in buying it. My daughter and son-in-law are taking over from me. I'm outdone. I got my sixty years, and I remember shoveling hay out of that barn on my fifteenth birthday. Sweating, terrible. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. I'd like to kept, be kept in the loops, or our contact information's on there, and if there's anything else you want to ask me, you could ask now.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Okay.
Ms. Hartman?
It's a good thing I got to come back up, because I left my glasses up here. Elizabeth Hartman, Handover Township. So, non-agenda items. Many of you may have heard me outside this past week with Blue Horns giving kudos at Children of Youth to good caseworkers. I have a hundred and fifty-nine families that I work with. So, if I got a caseworker that had three good comments about them, they have a kudos board inside. We yelled them up, so Miss, I don't pronounce it correctly. It's Katrina. I don't, can't pronounce her last name yet. It's like Crocomo, I'll get there, but even gave her kudos on the board, so they get a twenty-five dollar gift card. I met with the chair this past week on some issues that I'm having with PFAs being served. Asking questions. I have a call out to the Pennsylvania State Police to see why they're not serving them when the sheriff's office can't. And then my other question is, like I said before, smoking areas on county property. When I worked for a private organization, we had designated smoking areas. I think the one here is all the way down the end of the parking lot, so maybe they're not getting enough time for break, but they can't go out there to smoke, but they're smoking underneath, no smoking signs outside, which doesn't look very good. It's a sign that says no, no smoking, and they're standing there having cigarettes. I used to be a smoker. I used to take my umbrella, walk down the rain to where I was supposed to smoke, or in my car, and smoked. While we were outside, we cleaned up some garbage, two bags of garbage out back, between here, and we walked over to the jail. We were told a couple of times by different deputies and sheriffs, I'm not sure what they're called, that we were not, we were on private property and we were going to be arrested. I asked them to call the sheriff, because he knew I was going to be there. And overall, it was a very good day. I gave kudos to Criminal Health, Mental Health Court, to Judge Sklarowski, who's very wonderful with mental health clients, Dr. Ambrose, who runs that program. Kudos to the new director of Children of Youth, that we're hopefully optimistic that she can turn the place around, from what I'm seeing so far. And hopefully optimistic that the new director that you put in the jail can get rid of Well Path, and we could get the jail situated. We yelled up to the prisoners, stay alive, we care about you, and we're trying to help you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Oh, Richard Miller, did you want to come back up a second?
Sure.
I apologize for the earlier snafu.
No worries.
My first time addressing this body, so I thought my paperwork was in order, and I'd have time to rest before I had to speak. I won't start again. I, I just wanted to tell you, as I was before, that we approached our communication with you a little differently this year. Usually, we send some numbers to show you how the libraries around Luzerne County are being used. This year, we printed a few dozen postcards and put them out to ten libraries, and I was actually surprised with the turnout. And I'll just read you just a very few to show you the flavor of what we got back. My family adores the Kirby Library in Mountaintop. It is our sanctuary and our oasis. It was the last place we went when the pandemic struck, and the first we visited when the world began to reopen. I came to the Oosterhout Library for help on the computer. Christopher helped me for two hours to apply for the job. I got it. Hazelton Library goes above and beyond to include the community, especially children. Thank you for supporting the Lego Club at Wyoming Free Library. When Stephanie calls to tell me a book is waiting for me at the Oosterhout, my heart is so happy. And finally, the library is a place where we will never be alone. It's filled with love, laughter, mystery, and adventure. So, I appreciate your time on behalf of the ten libraries of Luzerne County and the citizens that use our libraries. I'd like to thank you for supporting us. If I may, leave these with you to review at your leisure.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Great news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need some positivity around this. I think that's all I have for this. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? Hi.
Madam Chair, this is Mark Rabel speaking.
There's some, there's a, I'll get you in one second, Mr. Rabel.
First.
Oh, go ahead. He's going to let you go, Mr. Rabel.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Sahaski. Madam Chair, members of council, I'm just going to follow up with this, with regards to ARP money. I hope you all, I hope you all have your stories straight, especially the solicitor, when the inspector general comes knocking on your doors, because I don't think it's going to be a pleasant day, especially when we already had today that our county was in the national spotlight again with the congressional hearing. If any of you Luzerne County officials think you're above the law because you're politically connected, guess again. Because, might I remind the council and the administration, two Luzerne County judges went to jail. A Luzerne County Commissioner went to jail. Numerous officials went to jail. If you think you can't be let out in silver bracelets in front of the public, think again. It's not a joke, because the joke will be on you and your families when you got to explain in front of a federal judge and grand jury. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Mr. Saski?
Yeah, first, thank you for the answer for, without the one. What would happen, like, if they do not hit the marks? Does that money, do you guys get to reallocate the money and like redistribute it, or do they have, like, multiple chances to get, like, to get right, like, get their project right if they don't hit the timelines? Because I know that, like, what I've seen with, one of the only things they really got done is they got the reverter clause removed from the the deal that they have with the city, where they were supposed to have things started at this point, and they never did. So, that's, that's where my concern with that project was. And just one other thing, just in general, about, like, this room, like, for a county this size, I don't know, I wish you guys would have a much bigger room where you could fit, like, at least, I think I counted, like, around thirty seats. That would just be, I don't know, maybe if you guys want to scrunch up together to fit more chairs in here, just, I think that's, it's just unacceptable to have this small of a room for a county of our size. Five.
Thank you. Any other members in the public? Go ahead.
Tom Nebraska Dell. I agree with Mr. Urban and with Mr. Rabel also, that I don't think that was a that's basically what Mr. Rabel was saying. It's not a legal vote we had there. I don't think there's such a thing as, you're either supposed to vote yes or no, not yes, and five conflicts. and five conflicts in Ms. Raile's case, or yes, and two conflicts in Mr. Mitchell's case. And Carl volunteered a potential conflict. His is the least likely of anybody's, but I don't think you could legally do that. So Attorney Scheme, if you would kindly consider preparing a letter, signing and dating it, and address it to the county manager saying it was in fact legal in your opinion, and state your reasons for it and state the actual count because we don't know what the count is either. Would you get all these different potential conflicts? We don't have any clue what the vote passed by at this point, you know? The ARP funds were awarded. What's the vote? We, nobody in here knows. And we don't know because of these, all these, I vote yes, except I vote yes, except two times, you know, two conflicts, yes, except five conflicts. Yes, except one potential conflict. How you can even categorize, categorize Carl's is probably is not even a conflict. You know, just the fact that he graduated from Kings doesn't mean he can't vote for there. It's supposed to be a little bit closer relationship. They have 11,000 graduates that went to King's. So, so I'm saying you have to classify in the letter Carl's potential conflict. The other real conflicts are Ms. Radell and Mr. Mitchell. And I think that's your responsibility to provide the county manager with that. He shouldn't even have to ask for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. All of our conflicts are potential conflicts. We disclosed them to Booth at the beginning of the process. And the vote was eight, three on every single application other than the ones that had conflicts. So Kings would be six, four, six, five. And everything else would be, all the other conflicts would have been seven.
Still appreciate a letter from Attorney Scheme to the county manager so the public can see it.
My name is Matt Krone. I'm from Freeland Borough. I want to thank council for finally taking action on this. You know, there were other county bodies that took action years ago, literally. So thank you for finally moving it forward. Was everybody ever going to be happy? No. With respect to conflict of interest regarding financial matters, my understanding is there has to be a personal pecuniary interest. So maybe somebody works for one of these agencies, but unless there's going to be extra money going into their pocket, there's no tangible conflict. That's my understanding.
Mr. Krone, can you just spell your last name?
K R O N E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Okay, here now I have an email from Robin and Walter Koch, and to be read and entered into record at the 2023 County Council meeting. Each councilor undoubtedly have their own reasons for wanting to serve on county council. Unfortunately, most members have consistently proven that they're obviously unqualified to serve as a citizen of the county besides the unconscionable lack of regard for the mismanaged November 22 midterm elections allowing former county manager Robertson to resign rather than be fired and understaffed DA to complicate receiving timely answers for what transpired in that election. The unnecessary tax hike for citizens during unprecedented inflationary times. You have wasted 30,000 by unnecessarily hiring Booth to administer the ARC funds. We, the taxpayers of Lusar County, were told it was necessary to hire Booth to fairly and impartially award the ARC funds. And now you have undone exactly that and put our county at risk for receiving future federal dollars. You obviously have no regard for wasting our hard-earned tax dollars. All these poor decisions speak volumes of your incapability to properly represent Lusar County residents. We will not forget your incompetence, which mirrors that which we have witnessed through numerous other county departments. Your obligation as elected representatives in our county was to award ARC funds to the peaceful and active financially by COBA, which is not what you are proposing. You have not met that obligation or other duties of this council, which includes serving the public with accountability, responsibility and transparency. Awarding ARC money should be placed on hold until 2024 since council, as it currently stands, is incapable of properly doing so. You cannot adequately do the job. Please finally do the right thing and resign because you're not, because you're not representing the best interest of Lusar County people. Any other members in public? Anybody on the table?
This past week, I actually sent all of my colleagues and some of management in the county my concerns with actual paper ballots. So I have to echo the control group's sentiments regarding paper ballots with possibility of over voting. You know, some of us are running for county council as some of the people out in this audience today. If somebody votes for more than six candidates on that particular race, that those votes will be thrown out because of over voting on paper. Dissemination of wrong ballot ballots to individuals. We are in a primary. It's not impossible for Republicans to get a Democratic ballot, a Democrat to get a Republican ballot at the polling place. I can see that being a mistake. I think it happened before a couple of years ago. Ballot security, placement of those ballots. I know when I voted a couple of years back and we had paper ballots, the ballots were basically on the table right in front of everybody. They weren't behind the table, weren't locked up. Anybody could have ran in, walked in, took them off the table and ran right out the door with them. I think that's a problem. There's the delivery ballots, the delivery of ballots. They could be delivered to the wrong areas, wrong precincts, which had happened in that particular race or in that particular year. You know, you might have a polling location with five different wards. You know, this might be Ward one, this is Ward two, and the ballots are transferred, well, basically in the wrong place. And you could be potentially voting for the wrong candidates if they're in a regional race like a school board or you know, even in some local council races. Lack of paper controls and counts, there's like no unique QR code for each ballot that's printed. I mean, that could be something potentially that the Board of Elections or the Bureau can look at. So everyone that's printed has a unique number or serial number that we know that is a control number, but it doesn't tie to the voter. So it's unique. And then the audit of the paper ballots, if you print 100,000 of them out, you should be able to reconcile 100,000 at the end of the night. So if we use 55,000, there should be 45,000 left over that are accounted for and the ones that are used be accounted for. So I think, you know, it can pose a problem this year. And I think it's lazy on behalf of the Bureau not to use machines. It's we paid for those machines. If we want to talk about elections, there's also one other issue, third-party candidates. You all, you know, were supposed to be able to get your packets, I think on March 5th. It was earlier in the month. They're still not ready. They weren't ready. So anybody that wants to run for an office as a third-party candidate, you can set up an appointment. Yes, you have till August to get your petitions in. But what happens if you wanted them done a couple of weeks ago? You know, they didn't even have them ready for you. So, you know, I'm putting this county on notice, letting the public know that that's a problem. I hope the press actually looks into it. Because something has to change in that office and change with the Board of Elections and change here. Because I'm still waiting for a government study commission question to go upon about the change some of the deficiencies that we have at this charter. You know, my colleague shot it down numerous times, and I wish you would truly look at the problems that we create because of the lack of action.
Ms. Rabel, is there a way we can maybe just have Ms. Harvey come in here just to explain? Or if we can just send her an email and just ask her to explain what the reason was for switching to paper ballots this year? I have numerous concerns about the use of the Dominion voting machines, truthfully. So I think that, you know, I don't know for a fact what her reasoning is, but I feel like this paper ballot situation might just be a stopgap measure just for this election.
We can, yeah, we can reach out to Ms. Pecora, Ms. Harvey and schedule a one-work session if that's okay with the manager. Thank you.
I mean, as I understand it, the machine, all it is is a ballot marking device. It limits you on not being able to choose more than six. Because if you put that in the code, you can't pick more than six. So you're not going to run into that concern. You know, if somebody marking seven on a paper ballot, you know, somebody can mark all 12 and then that race is thrown out for everybody. I know Carl, you're running back or running, I'm running. We ain't, same thing with you. So I think, you know, let's not wait till after the fact and address it now before the race happens. You know, and I mean, there's members of the audience, like I said, they're running for the same office that we're running to. I mean, there's 12 people on the ballot. If somebody marked seven, then that ballot or that portion of the ballot is canceled out. So none of us, nobody will get a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Any other members in the public? Here now, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All favor? Ascension opposed at 6:55 with a start at 7:05.
Exploration on Thursday at our work session.
So that we obtained, uh, we were awarded a new gun violence grant in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars. We will be able to, uh, hire a detective and an ADA with that money. Um, so if you see in the coming meetings, we're asking to open the budget. That's the reason we got a grant and are gonna try to put in more positions to be paid for with that grant. As far as our secretarial staff goes, um, we've been very fortunate. In the last month, we've received an influx of staff out, staff applicants. We're in the process of interviewing. Uh, I think we're gonna be able to fill all of the vacancies in the staff area, which is terrific news uh, for our office because we did have quite a few vacancies. Looking forward, uh, I think you've heard some of our plans, but just to summarize, we obtained a burn memorial justice grant in the amount of two point five million dollars. That is gonna enable our office to establish an emergency services unit. The purpose of this unit is to assist, uh, not just our office, but but every municipal officer in Luzerne County with things such as accident and crime scene reconstruction, digital device analysis, dynamic entry teams, and all the equipment associated with those tasks. As everyone probably knows, the state police do most of our, not most, they do, um, they do all of our accident and scene reconstruction. Uh, we just recently had an armed gunman who was barricaded himself in a home in Luzerne and their state police cert team was actually on another call uh, about an hour from here. So they had limited resources to send a few guys. Fortunately, you know, they're experts at their field and they were greatly able to help us that the the incident ended peacefully. But it's just one example of the type of things that can happen. You know, they handle multiple counties uh, and could be called at any moment to be anywhere. So we need our own ability to respond to these incidents. Uh, additionally, we have somewhat less serious incidents where we need officers specially trained to enter homes in dangerous situations. Uh, with all the drug warrants we do, uh, we see more and more, you know, homicide and other violent criminals coming from out of the area and holding up in Luzerne County for reasons I can't quite understand. But putting a a regular patrol officer without the right equipment in situations where they could be killed is just unacceptable. So this grant is gonna greatly help us assist other agencies in that area. As you know, we already have a gun violence grant and a gun violence detective. As I said, we've just received additional money. Well, we haven't gotten the money. We've been awarded the grant. We should be able to hire an additional detective and an assistant district attorney to handle those cases. Uh, as you know, we'll be looking to expand the detective division uh, to hire two more child abuse detectives and two opioid trafficking detectives from grants, uh, currently in the works. And we will be looking to use the opioid money in conjunction with Luzerne Wyoming County Drug and Alcohol to open a central processing center. Uh, we're looking for locations and, you know, in in discussions with locations, but the idea would be have, first of all, Luzerne County is among the worst in fingerprinting defendants for some reason. Um, so it would give us an opportunity to have one location to uh, fingerprint and process those people arrested by our police departments. We would have a uniform policy in making that happen. Uh, we could make it happen more effectively and our local police wouldn't be tied up in situations where the arrestee is under the influence of drugs or alcohol is required to take them to the hospital, sit with them for four hours and they're stuck off the road. Those are just some of the goals that we have, uh, moving forward. One of the other items that I know that we've discussed in the past is having school outreach officers using the opioid money to hand, uh, to hire, uh, some people with expertise and speaking to children. I've been in discussions with Ryan Home Hogan's from Wyoming Valley, uh, excuse me, Luzerne and Wyoming, uh, County Drug and Alcohol about that program to reach out to children to speak about the use of opioids and other drugs. In conclusion, uh, I just wanted to say how thankful I am that we were able to end the twenty twenty-two fiscal year under budget and still effectively accomplishing what we had planned for the year. I'm hopeful that twenty twenty-three, uh, sees resolution of some of the personnel shortages that we've seen in the past and some would have become somewhat accustomed to during COVID. Finally, I'm greatly looking forward to some of the new projects I just mentioned. And on behalf of the district attorney's office, I thank you for the opportunity to update the residents of Luzerne County and county council on our twenty-two calendar year. Having said that, and I know this is a little bit off topic, but if you'll indulge me, I have some comments about our elective uh, election investigation that seems to be the elephant in the room that everyone, uh, probably for good reason has been talking about. If anyone had taken the time to watch today's hearing, which our detectives and I did, uh, there was some question about why uh, everyone is relying on the district attorney's office uh, to handle this investigation when in fact not every aspect of the investigation might be criminal. As probably the members of council know, and doubtlessly our solicitor knows, uh, our election code actually mandates that these investigations be handled by the district attorney. The county boards of elections within their respective counties shall investigate election frauds, irregularities and violations and report all suspicious circumstances to the district attorney. So that's primarily the jurisdiction, uh, where we get jurisdiction to handle all manner of complaints related to election matters. As I said very early on in accepting this investigation, I realize that some, some of the allegations may not be criminal. However, uh, some of the allegations actually came across as being criminal and whether or not they come to fruition uh, doesn't stop our office from investigating them. Additionally, along with probably many of our county officials, I take exception to the comments from the House administration spokesperson and some of the committee members and witnesses indicating that Luzerne County officials are somehow leaving voters in the dark, excuse me, in the dark or abdicating their responsibility. As I said before, Luzerne County properly referred the investigation to our office. We've been diligently pursuing the answers while also addressing the multitude of other serious and violent crimes we handle on a daily basis. On behalf of our office, I wanted to thank council and the administration for their patience in awaiting completion and approval of the final report, which has to be reviewed by all of the detectives and all of the lawyers involved. Our, once our reports completed, we're gonna meet with county officials, provide them with our results, release the results to the public and encourage anyone that wishes to participate in any forum the federal government deems appropriate. Although it is my hope that the report itself answers all of the questions pending before the committee, the questions that probably exist in this room and the questions that exist throughout the county and with members of the public. In watching today's hearing, our detectives and I observed testimony of occurrences that simply did not happen. Much of this testimony was postured in terms of things the witness was told, i.e. we heard complaints that such and such a thing happens. Many voters contacted me and said they saw X, Y, or Z. This is why hearsay is very rarely allowed in trials affecting the freedom of our citizens. We understand that the committee's rules are much more relaxed than a formal trial, but our office felt compelled to caution the public about these stories. Our experience has taught us that anecdotes shared at a lunch counter from a bar stool or anonymously by email are often very different than facts told from the same people to detectives in a formal investigation. I personally have had people approach me in public and claim to have witnessed irregularities. When detectives interviewed them, the very same people mysteriously could recall no such facts. We have added the claims from today's hearing to our investigation. I'm confident our, our report will answer many, if not all of the questions raised since the election and in today's hearing. I thank the election board, the bureau, council and the public for their patience in awaiting completion of our investigation. While I cannot predict a delivery date, I can say that it will be forthcoming shortly. I can also promise the, that we have been and will continue to be diligent in bringing this matter to a full and fair completion. Thank you all.
Uh, next we have the controller in your report, Mr. Griffin.
Now I'm gonna set a timer here so I make sure that I'm done. Plenty of time for your agenda. I don't wanna take too much time with the councils. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to council tonight. Uh, yeah, that probably would be helpful for you to see my screen.
Good job, Robert. Did we share it so that we could put it on the Zoom or not? Oh, they're getting it up. Sorry. Oh, okay.
Where, let me find it here first.
Yeah, I know it's behind me, but people on Zoom, if you're watching with us, you can't see it. Yeah, so I was gonna, you say, yeah, the evening signal that it was gonna be on Zoom. It's on the Zoom, but not on the TV. Thank you, though.
You okay back on the TV?
Yeah, you can start.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, before I start my report, first of all, I want to introduce my deputy controller, who's, uh, Thomas Saccola. He, uh, started in my office back in November. I'm really happy to have a full complement of staff in my office, uh, since November. He's a great asset to my team as well as, uh, helping get our audits completed on time and getting a lot of our work done and guiding the staff. So I wanted to introduce him to the council. I think it's his first time at the meeting, so I, I think it's important that we all know who that person is in case he has to address council at any moment. I'll go through my slide quickly to, uh, Mr. Sangadolche's point. I'll try and go through the pre-ramble, as he called it, which is appropriate. And it's not something the council really needs to, uh, more of the meat and potatoes of the, uh, presentation is obviously the, the first part of my presentation is I am the independent controller of the county. And, and the design of the charter is to make sure that there was a check and balance on both the legislative branch as well as the executive branch. And that's what the controller's office is supposed to be as the independent watchdog of the county. Uh, that's by design by the charter. Otherwise, there'd be no, uh, check and balance on the, uh, two branches of government. Uh, definitely don't have a, uh, do have some some, uh, authority in the courts area, but clearly it's a, a check and balance against the, uh, uh, two branches of government. Uh, on the slide there, you'll see who my controller office staff is. Uh, I have a staff of four people. I have, uh, two auditors, uh, two internal auditors, an auditor two, which is a union staff member, and I have a deputy controller in my office. Powers and duties of the controller up on the screen there, which is outlined in our charter. What's the, uh, the function of the controller's office and what my job is regarding, uh, the oversight of programs and, uh, financial matters of the county. Unrestricted access information on the screen that we have there is, is part of the charter, which gives us unrestricted access. Uh, council will recall last year that we had some issues, uh, that, uh, the, the office of law in conjunction with, uh, chief solicitors scheme worked regarding the unrestricted access part of the charter that allows the controller to look at anything at any time, providing that we give, uh, sufficient notice to the manager that we're looking into something for whatever function we're looking for. And so the unrestricted access in a charter is critical to the function of the controller's office. So that if there's information that we need either from the administration or from the legislative branch or the judiciary, we can get that information and perform our, the works of our office. Uh, the, the annual, the twenty-three annual county council report is, is what the purpose of this meeting is. It's according to the charter, it's required that the controller and the district attorney give an annual report every, uh, before the end of the first quarter. So we're within the charter's guidelines to do that, and, uh, it, the purpose of the report is to tell council what the budgetary needs of the controller as well as what we performed in the prior year and our findings so that the council is aware. And the, and most importantly, I, I appreciate the fact that the acting manager Swets is here so he can get the, uh, information that we'll, we'll provide in this report, so we can get some follow-up on that as well. Let's see, and the next one, teamwork with the county council manager for Luzerne County government is the next slide. And as you, council can see, the, the importance of that is, is really critical to the function of the office. Uh, I, I don't like to take my deputy controllers, uh, statements, but he has a statement that says we have to stack hands, and I think that's important. And to Mr. Swets's point when he first took over, it's time to start working together to fix problems, find solutions to move the county in a positive direction. Without the three of us working together between the manager, the council and the controller, that really can't happen in an effective way to move the county forward. So when the controller brings findings to the manager, the, the manager should do his due diligence to try and move those along in a positive fashion for the betterment of the county or explain to the controller why you can't do that. And that's something that needs to progress in the future. Uh, with this acting manager, we have no problem with that. Uh, hopefully that'll continue in the future because we really need to work together and use the ability of the controller to have unrestricted access to get information that is very important to the manager. So he knows where the problems are in the county as well as the county council. Cause county council is a part-time body. County council doesn't have the time to know what's going on in the county. So the controller is a valuable resource for the council as well as the manager. Uh, the controller's budget comparison for twenty twenty-two, uh, the controller, the controller's budget in twenty twenty-two was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand four thirty-seven. That was our budgeted expenses and we spent two hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, which is a net savings to the taxpayers of fifty-four thousand and eleven cents. So we came in under budget last year by, by a substantial amount of money. The spreadsheet you see on your screen there is a breakdown of your twenty twenty-two expenses. Uh, so and the twenty-three approved council, uh, budget. You'll see there's some items highlighted in yellow. The very first one was the wages nonrepresented, which was a, a, a union contract with council approved, which was very helpful for us in twenty-three. They granted a, a pay raise to, uh, I'm sorry, in a nonrepresented, it's under budget on twenty-two. We had to, we took some of the money out of the budget amendment, as you'll see, the negative nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We took some of that money out and we put it into special legal fees and repairs, maintenance and machinery. With that money, we were able to upgrade the office computers. We were able to provide two monitors for the staff instead of one in the past. Uh, they worked with one monitor before two was much more efficient for the, for the staff to work with. It's less, uh, eye fatigue and strain. So we were able to upgrade the office and get uh, the upgraded, uh, system. So it makes our office a little bit more productive. Uh, I don't know if there's any other, uh, the special legal fees. We, uh, did a budget transfer there only because we had the issue with the previous county manager giving us uh, restricted access instead of unrestricted access. And it was a conflict for the office of law to represent us there. So we had to, uh, go out and get an outside legal counsel for that. So there was a requirement to get additional funding there. Budgeted amount was a thousand dollars, which wasn't enough. So as you saw, I spent twenty-three, two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in special legal fees. So I was over budgeted in that line item by a thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which I needed to transfer for. Um, the twenty-two audit proposal review and status, we did the compliance of audit tax collectors. We looked at all tax collectors, make sure they had all the proper documentation in the county to make sure that we were in compliance with the real estate tax collector law. We did the, uh, we, we did not start the Bureau of Elections filing fees and campaign finance report, which I told council was on my agenda last year because of the turnover in the office. I thought it was best to just wait till we get a, a substantial staff there to actually go in there and try and, uh, get information to proceed with that. The computer and technology inventory, we started that. We went in progress with that when, uh, Ray Case was here as the director. He has since left the IT department, so we put that on hold temporarily until, uh, the manager puts a new, uh, director in that position. The five dollar local fee reimbursement, that was started back in March of last year. Uh, it was put on hold. I, I know we tried to get some documentation from PennDOT. That was put on hold by the previous county manager. Hopefully we'll get that started again this year. Hopefully I'll work collaboratively with the office of law and the county manager to get those folks their refund back from the five dollar local fee reimbursement, which is sitting in the, uh, budget right now at, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is currently sitting there waiting to be dispersed to people who paid additional five dollar fees that needs to have that audit performed. The real estate tax collector financial reports, we performed tax audits on eleven tax collectors. We started to magistrate district judges this year and, uh, we did a contract for the vending machine contract. And we completed the prison commissary fund audit as required by state, uh, statute for prisons. The only findings we found in the commissary audit, everything was done properly. They do have an abundance of money there. We would like to work with the manager and the, uh, division head for corrections to allocate that money either into a higher interest account, much like Lackawanna County just recently did. And also have them use that money to try and offset some of the funds that we spend out of the general fund within the guidelines of that fund. Because they're not, I don't think they're utilizing it based on our audit for the betterment of the, uh, reduction of the general fund. I think we can get more money out of the commissary fund and, and, and use less general fund money. And that money is there for that purpose. Uh, the twenty-two additional audits, I'll leave that for your review. We did look at the, the budget transfer of twenty-nine thousand dollars for the, uh, overtime payment. If you remember back in September, we had an issue with a twenty-nine thousand dollar transfer. The manager put a notation in, uh, acting, the manager at the time put a notation in that there was a problem with that. He thought that that needed to be looked at. The controller's office looked at it. We found the, the, uh, we found the issue was our personnel policy really needs to be revised. It really needs to be looked at and, and more detail put into our personnel policy to allocate competent, competent compensatory time and overtime in our personnel policy. It's really, doesn't give management of very good guidelines on how we do that. And it is what happened in the twenty-nine thousand dollar transfer was person wasn't using the chrono system. They were using paper documentation submitting it to their manager and so, certainly they were entitled to the, the compensation. But the ability to track it and the internal controls of that is very, was very weak. And that's what we found in our, uh, audit findings. And we're hoping that moving forward that we could get the manager and the division head, the administrative division head to correct those issues moving forward. Uh, twenty-two highlighted audit findings. I have those there for you. The, the one is twenty, item number two is the Chronos time clock system is not being utilized effectively and accurately by county employees. It is a common, a common problem. And I'm working with the manager, acting county manager and the administrative services division head as well as HR to try and come together to fix that problem. We, we kind of relaxed the issue when we had COVID and that has not been corrected since COVID. And so we have a lot of managers that just basically keep track of people's times without using the time clock system. And that's really not the, the purpose of spending the money for the time clock system. So hopefully the manager, the acting county manager, myself and administrative division head will correct that. Item number three is the correctional office uniform payments. The issue that we had with that issue was the, uh, the way they're issuing uniforms to the, uh, corrections officers is a lump sum payment. I sat with the office of law. I sat with the union. I sat with the, the vision head for corrections to try and correct that. Instead of doing it in an accounting process where they're giving the receipts to the county and having them paid by accounts payable, they're giving the money as a lump sum payment to the three vendors in January to the, to a, a substantial amount of money that the vendors are holding for the purchase of uniforms when the corrections officer decides to go there and buy uniforms. That's not an accountable practice to give county taxpayers money to a vendor in the hopes that that person will go in there and buy uniforms. And at the end of the day, our, our audit showed that there was a, a, a lot of uniforms that were not purchased and the vendor still had our money. And, and we have, there's really no recourse for us to get our money back short of having the office of law file paperwork and have them re, give us that money back. So we have a problem with that whole issue. Uh, hopefully when union contract comes up for negotiation this year, uh, the council will pay close attention to that section of their contract and make sure that it's worded properly so that those corrections officers' uniform allowances are protected so that we don't have a corrections officer going to buy uniforms and have a vendor say, sorry, you've overspent without any recourse to say, no, I don't, I don't have any documentation. So that's a real problem that needs to be corrected by the administration. Uh, I also put down an item number four is about the New World Accounting System for monitoring contracts and expiration dates. One of the, one of the issues that we found in, in our audit was the contracts sometimes expire and they're well past expired dates and there's no follow-ups to, uh, renew those contracts because we don't have any signals to say that that contract's expired. If we would put that into New World or into another software system, then the manager would know what contracts are expired and, and take appropriate action to make sure that we're not, uh, proceeding on, on something without a valid contract. Uh, the twenty-three proposed audits, I have the human services agency contract audit. I, I'm gonna continue with that. Uh, my predecessor worked on two of those, uh, contracts. I hope to get started on those this year to try and find any, uh, deficiencies that we might have in those contracts. I want to get back in, I want to do the computer and technology inventory policy. The Bureau of Elections, at some point, when those departments become stable enough to go in there. I don't want to disrupt their work in any way. I want to give them the ability to get their stuff done. And by me going in and doing an audit, it may disrupt that whole process. So we're working on the magisterial district judges. At the moment, we're doing the financial audits of those folks. The sheriff's audit, revenue audit, we're, we're gonna look at the PFA fund and the gun permits. That's something that my office did prior to, uh, twenty-eleven and hasn't been done since then. So we need to look at the revenue items for that. Uh, we're gonna look at the human resources audit, the chrono system payroll, work with the manager and the division head to correct that deficiency. And I really would like to look at the, uh, the act thirteen funding audit. I know that's something that came up under the act thirteen committee that there's been money dispersed to that, and we don't know for sure if they've used the money for the purposes that we dispersed it for. So we would like to do an audit of that this year as well, just to verify and give a report to the act thirteen committee of council. Uh, the auditor, the, the audit monitoring parameters, I'll leave that there for you to peruse that on your own. Other duties and responsibilities of the controller offices, I'm on, we're, my office is on the ACE Commission Board, uh, the constable advisory board. Luzerne County bid and RFP openings, when they open bids and RFPs at the purchasing office down the hall from my office. If they call me, I will go up there and just oversee that. It's not part, it's not a function of the office, but it's just another check and balance. And we open the contracts or end bids for the Wilkes-Barre Stan Airport, the bids, I should say, not contracts. We, we are present and we alternate between Lackawanna County and Luzerne to be a present for bid openings and make sure that those are followed properly and the proper documentation is there for that board to, uh, award bids. Uh, the county watchdog challenges on my last slide, this picture is a picture that Mr. DeLuca put out many, many years ago, and I keep it in my slides because it's appropriate. Uh, the county council, the county controller must have authority of some sort, which is not in the charter, but needs to possibly be put in the administrative code to at least put a finding or a timeline that the manager has to respond to corrective action that the controller brought to his attention or the council's attention. So if the controller brings something to the, uh, county manager, maybe a six-month window to say, yes, I'm addressing it. Because all too often the findings that we're finding in our audits, particularly for the tax collectors, are the same findings that the previous controller found. And the, and she, the previous controller was there for eight years and, and most of the findings are being repeated over and over and over. And because we're not correcting the problems and that's what we need to fix countywide. We need to take the information that we get from the controller's office, work effectively across all, all parameters to make it work effectively. So we move the county in a positive direction. One of the, one of the issues that we ran into with the tax collectors is the lack of, and our tax collectors do a fabulous job, I will tell you. Uh, we get, uh, probably about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our revenue from the tax collectors. They do a great job. But we really need to spend some time and given training. And I had a conversation with the budget and finance director this morning as well as the treasures office and tax collector processor. We went, and it was a finding was put in the audits, uh, years, two years ago by, um, Michelle Bednar. The training is important for our tax collectors and using the RBA system. The RBA system is not, is our tax collection system that they enter all their data into and produce the checks to the county. Most all the audit findings that our o, office finds in tax collectors is lack of bookkeeping, proper bookkeeping for the tax collector because they haven't been properly trained on how to, how to enter information into the RBA system. So hopefully I can work together with the acting county manager and the budget and finance director to get a funding so we could do training over at the AMA building for tax collectors to be able to use the system that we require them to use so that we don't have these same findings year after year after year with tax collectors. But they do do a fabulous job. And most council members know I sat here when we voted about removing tax collectors and having it done in-house. I will tell you, if you ever want to sit down with a tax collector and watch what they do on a daily basis. I will tell you, if you ever want to sit down with a tax collector and watch what they do on a daily basis, especially in discount period, it's an eye-opener for most folks. It's not just as simple as getting a check across the window. It really is not. There's a lot of customer service that gets involved with tax collectors and some of them are very, very good at it. And some of them are probably not as good as they can be. So I, I applaud their efforts. I think they do a fantastic job for collecting taxes for the county. If the county were to take that over, that would be a monumental task for the county. Uh, it's not undoable. And I think it's something that could be explored in the future, but we need to make sure that we have adequate staff to do that. That is not something that could be done with five people. That needs a lot of staff and a lot of training. So uh, that's, that's the end of my report. If I have any questions for anyone on council, I'm more than happy to take any questions that anybody has.
Controller.
Yes, sir.
Question about the um, the correctional officer uniform allowance?
Yes, sir.
Can you expand upon that just a little bit? What, what, what the issue is exact? I mean, I kind of heard what the issue was, but do they have like a specific amount of in their, in their contract of how much they get every year? And then how, how do they go about redeeming that?
Yeah, well, the way the, the contract is written, they get seven hundred dollars a year. Each individual corrections officer gets seven hundred dollars a year to purchase uniforms. And that's paid for by the county. What the county has decided to do in, since twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty, when we started the audit, was they decided instead of giving the seven hundred dollars as an accounts payable receipt. For instance, the corrections officer would go to Cranston or Star, you pick the vendor that they pick. They would buy a uniform, they'd bring a receipt down. Counts payable would pay it. That would come off of their seven hundred dollars out of their fund. The way the county is doing it now is we're just going to the corrections officer say, which vendor do you want to use? And they say, we're going to use Cranston. So they'll take maybe ten officers for Cranston and they'll send a check for seventy thousand dollars to Cranston in January. That corrections officer goes to Jan, Cranston and buys a uniform, he'll say, what's your name? Lombardo? Okay, checks you off. You bought three hundred and fifty dollars with the uniforms. You have three hundred and fifty left. Cranston has the money in his bank account. It's, it's not an accountable practice, number one, but more importantly, if anything would happen to any of those vendors, they have our money. And the corrections officer doesn't have the uniform. So it's a really a dangerous situation. If, if in fact, some, some vendor decides that they don't have a shirt anymore, if it's a corrections officer and he's already designated that vendor, he can't buy a shirt because he's designated Cranston as his vendor. They have to pick a vendor of their choice according to their contracts. So if they pick Cranston or they pick Star or they pick Galls, if Cranston doesn't have a shirt, they can't buy a shirt from Star because they've already designated Cranston as their clothing. And he has the money. And it's not, it's not a good practice. So it needs to be corrected. Yes, sir.
You said ten officers?
Seven thousand, I'm sorry.
Sixty-three thousand dollars at the window.
Yeah, right. I moved my decimal one place too far.
Any other questions for Controller Griffith?
I don't have any questions, just a quick comment. Um, I just want to formally welcome Deputy Controller Tom Sikola. I have known Mr. Sikola for many years. I went to uh, I think I K through twelve, Jesse and I went to school together. So for many, many years, he is a top-flight guy, very educated, very qualified. And I think he will complement Controller Griffith very, very well. So I just wanted to say welcome. Thank you.
I was just going to say, had I known that at the interview process, it probably would have not been.
You did a good job.
We'll move on to agenda number one, receiving discussed budget reports regarding twenty-three management requests.
Uh, yes, uh, acting uh, Budget Finance Division Head, Joe Sanders, not available tonight. So as always, if you want to send something to him or ask me a question, I'm probably not going to be able to answer it because really it's his job at this point. But if you, you can reach out, you can email him, you can email me, but he wasn't available tonight. So uh, again, you can email him at CC and quote it back.
Great, thank you. Do you want to flow right into number two?
Sure. So uh, Water Street Bridge update. So I, I think everyone's well aware of the process. Um, and again, not to go step by step, uh, we had a contractor that came in and did some work. Uh, operations received the letter, which I shared with council. So since the time the letter was released and before it went to council, uh, the operations team reached out to the vendor. Uh, after that time and after Mr. Scavenger, some other people sent emails from council. I don't have every single person to email. But people from council reached out. I reached out to Jim Haddock. He actually talked to me after he talked to Mr. Scavage. And we have a meeting set up with PA District Four, Richard Roman, Representative Jim Haddock and Secretary Mark Plan. Uh, we're not sure who else we're going to get. At a minimum, we'll have those representatives on April tenth. Uh, I will follow up. Uh, if there's any specific questions anyone wants to ask, let me know or after I give the report, if anyone wants to be in contact, uh, I'll certainly put you in contact. But that's where the meeting is set up. It's set up for the tenth. Uh, I'll give a report on the eleventh. It, it'll literally be from the day before, meeting on, on the Monday. So that's what I have. So it was looked into. Uh, I, I know there were some questions on, you know, the vendor, what the vendor did, what the expectation was. And if you want to expand on them tonight or give them to me or wait until I give an update, that's fine. But I just wanted to update council and public on, you know, what happened since the letter went out.
So my, myself and Brian Thornton requested that we would like to go to that.
That's fine. I'm trying to get that.
Put them on the VIP list.
Yeah, I just think if uh, if two council members are going, then I should be open to all council members, just so it's fair. Just my opinion.
Yeah, more than that.
Yeah. Okay.
Depends on how many people. We're going to do it in a camp place, but now we have more people and they need to move.
I just think, I just think if, if two are, if two have a license to go, we just have to make it fair.
Yep.
Cool. Thank you. Uh, moving on, discussion regarding resolution approving the lease with UVU LLC for the Rose Tugger Active Adult Center. Uh, Ms. Heller, you on?
Uh, it's Neri Roselle, I'm on.
Okay, okay, great.
So we're asking, we're asking council to approve um, signing the lease agreement with I'm sorry, I think I kind of broke up there. We're asking that council to approve signing the lease agreement for a four-year term at the Nanny Co Active Adult Center where we are currently located. We've been there since two thousand and fifteen. The annual cost for the first two years of the proposed lease will be seventy-seven thousand, six forty. The last two years will be eighty-three thousand, six forty. We serve on average about eighty-five seniors at the center each month, um, consistently, about forty people attend each and every day. I'm sorry, excuse me?
Thank you. Now that you muted, I'll explain to you what's happening. You were unmuted and every time I spoke, it echoed back to the entire room on the speaker and it was a little bit cringy. We will uh, move on, but thank you for uh, jumping on today. We appreciate it. Uh, moving on to discussion regarding request operating the county manager, utilize funds in the minimum amount of greater fifty-seven thousand, hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents drawn from the ARPA, the Luzerne County Capital Fund or combination of both for the purchase items were moved from the sheriff's twenty-three budget. Sheriff Shumstein.
Uh, it is exactly how it stays, if you remember from my budget presentation specifically. Mr. Venus, you said you were going to be your driver of the law.
I will.
Uh, so I would appreciate that assistance.
Fair enough.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about this? Basically with the discussion?
Application then for the American Rescue Fund.
Um, Ms. McGinley, I was talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'll let you. I'll let you go, but I was in the middle of a, a thought. Um, so basically, uh, for council, we're looking at the ARPA money of the capital plan. Um, we tried the TASER contract, just so council has some background information. Um, and Sheriff, if I misspeak, just let me know. So the TASER contract had a deadline of the end of this month. So we did try to kind of put something together to get it on um, the voting session tonight, which I know, you know, we don't like seeing things without a work session, but because of the deadline and the possibility of the cost increasing, we did try a couple different methods to get it on the voting session. Uh, we ran into some issues because if it, if it's ARPA funding, um, you know, that's pulling from ARPA, it wouldn't have to come from lost revenue. We weren't sure. And then when it comes to the capital plan, that has to be an ordinance um, and that we couldn't do in a timely manner. Uh, so administration chair and myself, uh, council members were going back and forth trying to figure out, um, what we can do. Ms. Lawrence actually reached out to the sheriff's office and asked if we can get that deadline extended. While they couldn't extend the deadline, they were able to add like a little clause in saying that if it was signed, but council didn't approve funding, then you know, they wouldn't be liable. Is that right? They wouldn't be liable for signing the contract before the funding was there. They would just let it go. Um, so that's where we're at right now. Uh, Mr. McGinley, if you want to ask your question, I just wanted to give council some background as well.
Okay, thank you. As I said before, did the sheriff's office put in the application or information regarding American Rescue Fund? Which, is anybody else did?
I was told by the previous county manager, it's like because of public safety, we did not pass.
All those items that were there were public, for the most part, public safety items.
I agree a hundred percent that, that was.
Yeah, that's not a acceptable reply on his part to show.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
So this is important stuff.
Yes.
This is stuff that came up during the budget. We did promise this, so we just have to make sure we keep it moving. I want to get this funded as quickly as possible. So just anything you need from me, let me know.
Does council have any thoughts on whether you'd want to use uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds or the capital plan?
So do we know what we have left in the capital plan?
Also, I was cautioned that the capital plan um, could be iffy just because some of the things under this contract are a little bit of a stretch to be covered under the capital plan.
Yeah, I think there's enough in the capital plan. I've got to look at the updated numbers. Obviously, it's a work session on the vote. It was, as Mr. Riddle said, some of the problems trying to get on the vote tonight. We didn't have all the answers. You were going to get stuff up for the package. Uh, I think from a package, if it's all together, uh, I think most people know if you get one computer, it's not capital. If I can computer, I don't think sheriffs can buy one jaser. Uh, I think you can make an argument that's capital. Also, if you put that with body armor and everything is one package, I think capital's preferred way to go. We can, we can check. Obviously, you can get all the documentation, make sure we have the money for it. Uh, the only problem with that is it's a longer process. Because it's an ordinance and there's an introduction. Uh, but if they're able to, as stated before, um, sign a contract, kind of like a promise that if it's not funded and the vendor can hold it, I think that's a preferred route. Uh, it leaves ARP money available for other projects. Uh, if any of the projects today aren't completed, still even with the five million promises to two people, two organizations, there's still about ten million unallocated. So there is some money available. I think the preferred way would be capital. And so we'll make sure it's available and give you a capital uh, number well before next.
And Sheriff, will we be okay with the?
So I, I'm fine with that for all the equipment except for the soft body armor. That needs to move rather quickly. Uh, they did expire at the end of February. Now, it's not like it, you know, it doesn't go moldy the next day. Uh, it, it, it's a, a date that they have to put on for liability purposes, uh, but it's not. You know, it's like, kind of like a vote. Am I going to get a day or two after? I don't want to do that long from now. Uh, but yeah, you know, we need to move quickly on that one, it might be.
Council, any questions?
Can we get this on the next?
Yeah, we're going to move, we're going to move as we can. We'll just try to get the information on how much money is left in the funding. We'll talk about that in between meetings when we're going to. We'll get it on the next agenda. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Just one quick thing, while we're talking about ARPA money, we are going to need some money at the airport for them to stay in compliance in the next few years coming up. The number they filled out, I mean, was six point five million. Uh, unbeknownst to me, they train thirty pilots a year there, which I never, in my wildest dreams thought it was that many. But since COVID, we lost a lot of pilots and I guess they're a big contributor to putting more pilots in the air, which is nice to hear from that small airport. So I think it's important that we keep that in mind before we lease go.
Yes, I think it's on every, almost every single council member's radar because it's on mine and several council members when we were doing the um, the five million for the chambers and the five million for the uh, eligible citizens. Everybody said make sure it's left over, you know, for the airport. So it definitely is on all of our radars and we could maybe see about getting.
Is that, is that six point five million number like a solid set in stone? Is, is there something like?
They have.
If we can give them four million, would that be?
They have eight hundred and eighty thousand, I believe, they got through a grant. So that number was good, I think, when passed administration. It, it would have been, I think, around three. But because of inflation, like everything else, it's, it's doubled.
I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues there. They have to replace fuel tanks, taxiways, hangars. They want to extend the runway.
Yeah, so not to uh, bring this up, but I believe a tour was extended to certain council members and not others. I was not one afforded the tour. Um, and I know some of you were. Um, that would be, would have been nice to invite all of your colleagues uh, to the tour so we can all be aware of it. But while I have not seen it firsthand and other members sitting here, I'm not either. I think we're all aware of the importance of it. So if we can get an updated budget, I'm not sure um, who the contact is there because some of you have been communicating, uh, not through all of council, but personally. So we can get a budget about that six point five million. If it's less, if it's more, what we can fund, um, I think that would be a good start.
So if anybody's interested, email me and I'll set up a tour. And they have a folder there for every single thing that's on that list. And it's about that. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Ross Scavage. Um, let's see, we have a couple.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I for one, um, I never toured the uh, forty-fourth airport. I'd like to do that. And I'd like to say also, um, I did speak to the squabolas, uh, the people that uh, run the operations there now. Uh, this was many months back and they did uh, explain to me the tremendous and possible economic boom to the county if we did upgrade that airport and extend the runway to allow uh, you know, uh, faster aircraft jets and things like that to, to land. Not large jets, not like that, the Avoc airport. But I think in the long run, it will greatly benefit the uh, commerce and economy, local economy of the county. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thorin. Okay, we now have public comment. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody on the Zoom?
Yes. So what's for the discussion?
Oh.
I think you should have mine.
Hold on, Ms. Thorin.
I'll, I'll take it.
Okay.
You don't have to transport.
So briefly, um, on the sheriff's budget, um, something he mentioned when um, I spoke with him the other day was training, um, that he lost his training budget recently. Um, and he also said that what he feels happens in his department is that they come in, they do his in-house training, we send them away for school and then they leave. So there's nothing tying them to the county to make them do work. So during COVID, what hospitals did was you come in, we give you a ten thousand dollar bonus, you have to stay for whatever. I think we should tie something to their coming into the office when you do so that they can stay for at least two years, three years, instead of that office training them and then they're leaving to other offices. Um, an experience I had um, two years ago when I met in the DA's office, something totally different. Um, is getting people to learn how to use IT products. If they are not computer savvy, getting them up to that computer savviness. Um, I dealt with a detective that was unable to open Excel file of families that they were to interview. He could not open it. He refused to call somebody from the IT department because it was sensitive information that he didn't want somebody to look at. What are you talking about? You're a detective. I'm giving you a hundred and forty-five families to go and interview and you can't open the file and you don't trust your IT department to come down and look at that on your computer to open it? What is, who's in the IT department here? That a detective doesn't trust them to come and open up an Excel file on their computer? So as far as the sheriff's office goes, I misspoke before, he corrected me. It wasn't a correction. It wasn't one of his people that yelled at me at the jail. It was a corrections officer at the jail. So it wasn't his people. Um, and again, the issues that I have with smoking and, and the airport in forty-four, I grew up in forty-four. I pay for passes to go to the forty-four pool every summer for my grandchildren. For us, we hang out there. The planes are flying lower and lower. The planes are flying lower and lower. If you live in forty-four, I never, when I was a kid, did those planes fly so low. Those planes, like when you, if you're in the pool, you can take pictures. It looks like they're right over your head. I don't know what, like they're taking off at or if they're bigger that they look that they're so low. But that's something when we're going to get forty-four airport and we're wanting to expand a runway to bring it in. The effects, like there's a forty-four page that they talk about how bad the airport is, like with how low the, um, the planes are, that they're shaking houses and stuff. So just something to look into when you're going into the airport budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any other members of the public?
I just.
Sorry, go on.
Real briefly, because we were talking about, I wasn't going to speak at this point, but you spoke about the forty-four airport. I think one of the things that's really important is we get that advisory board working. I don't know what that takes from council, but. To Vice Chairman Lombardo's point, he's, he's got the people on the board now finally. I would certainly think that we need to have an advisory board on that airport before we allocate any capital funds to fix anything there. So we have oversight on county funding. Otherwise, there's absolutely no eyesight at all on that airport. And we just recently completed our audit with that airport and they're working totally blindly without any oversight by this council. And that's why we have the advisory board. Our, I think at one time, Harry Hawes, I think was a, Councilman Hawes was the delegate for that, if I, or we to you, I'm sorry. Uh, so we did have somebody from council that was on that board, but right now they haven't met in over, probably about seven or eight years, I guess, as near as I could tell. And that's something that the, as the fixed base operator actually wants us to do. He wants somebody there from the county. But we can't get anybody there. So I strongly urge, I don't know what it would take from either Vice Chair Lombardo or somebody to make sure that they actually meet. Get the members who are appointed to that and say, we need you to meet quarterly, if nothing else, before we allocate money. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Griffith, I, I believe, I mean, they have a core amount of meetings, so they, they should be meeting shortly. I, I have spoken to a few of the members that are eager to get some projects started. So I, I don't know when exactly. I haven't talked to them recently, but I know it's probably the next.
Yeah, maybe, maybe like I said, some urging from you as the, the chairman of that committee, possibly you could give them a little nudge to just say, hey, we need to get busy. So I think that's very important. I thank you for your.
Thank you, Mr. Scavenger.
So I went down two weeks ago and we all met just, you know, introduced ourselves along with the county man, uh, engineer. So just that we can all get, you know, acquainted and we're going to move on from there. So I did take the first step with that, just there. The other thing I like to bring up since we're on ARPA money, how many janitors do we have? Just curious. I have in Baltimore.
Some six, eight, ten, some not, not a ton, not.
Well, what I would love to see us do with some ARPA money is take five thousand dollars for each janitor and give them a bonus. Because those are the people that were here through COVID, wiping every door handle, bathrooms and everything that was required to keep everybody safe during that period. And I've seen a lot of other counties have done that. And if you get a great idea, because they're the people that kept everybody else safe. And I think it would, it's not going to be a tremendous amount of money, but I think it'd be a big thank you to those people that do that day in, day out. Just throwing that there. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Scavenger. I agree. I definitely agree. Okay, um, any other members in the public? You ready to zoom? Harry nine, do you have much to adjourn?
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Attention, please. Can I turn your mic?